Good evening. And welcome to the September 9th meeting of the Concord Select Board. I will remind everyone that our meeting is being broadcast and recorded. The first item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda, on which our town accountant warrants minutes from June 17th to July 1st and July 15th, a proclamation for Climate Preparedness Week, and a number of one-day special licenses. The Umbrella on September 14th from 6:30 to 9:30 at Stowe Street, wine and malt only. The Umbrella on September 27th, 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 at 50 Stowe Street, wine and malt only. The Umbrella on September 28th from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m., I'm not going to read it, Stowe Street, and they're all wine and malt, so we can skip all that. October 3rd from 7:30 to 11:00 p.m., October 4th from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m., October 5th from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m., October 6th from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., October 10th from 7:30 to 11:00 p.m., October 11th and 12th from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m., October 13th from 3:00 to 11:00 p.m., October 15th from 6:30 to 11:00, October 17th from 7:30 to 11:00, October 18th and 19th from 11, excuse me, from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m., October 20th from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And then Luke Hill Media on the 21st of October from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Concord Country Club, all alcohol beverages.
I have Jane on, can I ask you guys?
Okay, fine, because we welcome.
Are you there Jane?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Good evening Jane.
Good evening.
We're just about to have a motion from Linda to approve the consent agenda.
So moved? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the town manager's report, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the first order of business, is an announcement that we put out late this afternoon with regard to Eastern Equine Acystitis, or Triple E as it's more commonly referred to. As you know, it's been found in some mosquitoes that, some mosquitoes that have tested positive in areas around, notably Bedford and Sudbury. So I think even though our risk has been described as moderate up until recently, it's fair to say that it's likely there could be some mosquitoes that are carrying Triple E in Concord, especially. So we put out an announcement today, similar to what's been being done in our different communities around us, after consultation with the Board of Health, based on an advisory from Mass Department of Public Health, and consultation with both the regional school district and with Concord School Superintendent Hunter, we decided to issue a policy for the foreseeable future where outdoor recreational activities will have to cease at 6:00 p.m. and outdoor recreational facilities, parks, playgrounds, things like that, will be closed from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Really out of abundance of caution, there hasn't been a positive test that we're aware of, but, so again, NPH is recommending, the Board of Health supports this, this is the advisory schools using for their support, so if you, if.
If you have this, if you can hear this, please make sure you let your friends and neighbors know, we did put this out late on the website and through social media. A couple other items, just another kind of thing that broke today, the State Police had had an ongoing operation at Walden Pond, I believe that operation has concluded, so the pond should be back to regular operation. I also, you have a printed, written report in your packet, I won't go into too much detail on that, other than we did receive a grant for a transo-antidewelment project by the Road Depot, which is kind of exciting. There's a report from the Plane Department as well on the Assabet River Pedestrian Bridge, which looks like they've gained some ground in identifying a potential location, which sounds promising. We did have a senior management team discussion about the facility study that was presented at the last meeting by TBA Architects, it was a great discussion, we, I think, really did get through a lot of information and identified some things that are not, it's not just about room assignments and size of spaces, there's things like response times for public works vehicles and public safety vehicles, other, you know, potential surrounding use considerations and things like that. So, we have a report that's mostly complete, that we will give back to the Board identifying SMT's priorities for municipal, for all town facilities, and that should be, it should be in the next packet.
That would be great, thank you.
Yes, and then, I think, Mr. Chairman, you may have mentioned this last time, but we did, we did confirm that the two home rule petitions have been filed at the Legislature for the two affordable housing revenue, potential revenue generators. I did speak with someone, Representative Govea's office, and got a good, some good background there, and we'll be watching that carefully and using these hopefully as additional tools in the toolkit for the development of affordable housing in Concord. And I know it's going pretty fast there, but I'll leave it at that.
Well, both Senator Barrett and Representative Govea have terrific staff, I think it's Emily you spoke with, and Senator Barrett's office, woman's name is Audrey, and they've been very helpful to the town for both of these, both of these home rule petitions, they will be difficult to get passed on, so we have to, we have to be very attentive to that. Any questions, Town Manager? Thank you.
Thank you for printing it too, that's really helpful.
Helps keep me on task.
I concur that presentation last time by TBA was, was a lot, and I'm glad you're going to get your arms around it, but it was, it was very helpful, so that's great. My Chair's remarks, I have a few, just a couple reminders, the 14th coming up is Ag Day downtown, right Main Street here, so that's always fun, all the local farmers will be there, and on the same day is the opening of the Umbrella, so things are going to be hopping in town on the 14th. I'm meeting Thursday with the Superintendent of the National Park, BJ Dunn, and a few days later with the Director of the Concord Museum, and I met with John Arena, who's the Chair of our Celebrations Committee, all in preparation for trying to get our arms around our 225th, or 250th in 2025 celebration of the beginning of the American Revolutionary War. And for those of you who were around, this was quite an event for the 200th, including the President and lots of protesters and big committees and all kinds of things, so we are going to have to get organized to get that process started. Next, last, at our last electoments meeting before we had our open session meeting, we had, we had an executive session meeting to talk about litigation, and at the end of the meeting, there was some concern about the detail with respect to the words we used to go into executive session, and that is, we'd simply talked about it being litigation. And in fact, it should have been clearer than that, and should have specified the litigation that we were going to talk about, in that case, it was Esther Brook Woods litigation, so I regret that error. Finally, I'll be meeting with the town clerk and the town moderator tomorrow to begin our planning for what has become an annual event, which is an educational program for town committees. We have it usually every fall, I think this year, the two dates, I'll confirm, and we'll get a firm date, next time are October 12th and October 26th, usually as a two or three-hour program, we'll probably hold it here in the townhouse, but we always have a lot of new members and even old members, lots of changes in open meeting laws and things, remember when you do this, so hopefully get that process started.
It's a training for open meeting law for?
It, it's not an open meeting law training program, it's an educational program, but historically, every year we've done it, this will be, I think, the sixth year, we always have a session on what's new with the open meeting law, we always have a session on sort of ethics, and we always have had a session on euphemistically called what could possibly go wrong.
Yeah, that was funny.
Which is just how you sort of manage a meeting, and we'll be meeting tomorrow to find out how we fill out that agenda.
Yeah, I attended last year, it was really good.
Yeah, it's always fun.
And it's for all boards and committees, right?
For all boards and committees, absolutely. So that's the Chair's remarks, the next item of business is Director of Finance request for refunding the general obligation municipal bonds. Ms. LaFleur, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. I'm here this evening, as the Chair mentioned, to advise you of an opportunity that we have to refinance some of our existing bonds related to the Willard School construction. So at this point in time, we have $6.1 million worth of callable bonds on one of the two issues related to Willard School, and we have the opportunity to refinance these. Typically, I bring these opportunities to you in May or June when we're doing our annual refinance, but under the changes to the tax code at the end of 2017, the only opportunity that, or we used to have an opportunity to advance refund bonds, but that was taken away as part of that law, so we have to take these up out of sequence whenever the bonds are callable. So these particular bonds, the first call date is next month, so we have only 60 days in advance of that to look at a refinance. We did an analysis of this particular issue, and it looks like we have an estimated savings of about $621,000. That represents about 9.75% present value savings, it's about $85 on the tax bill. And typically, when we look at these refinancings, anything over 3%, it makes sense to move forward, so this one is really off the charts, so we'd like to move forward with it. And in order to do that, I need your permission, there is a form of the vote that needs to be taken in your packet, and I just would point out that in the event that things don't materialize when we take the bids, then we don't have to go forward, and there's nothing lost.
Is there a particular reason that this one is so large, I mean, ragged, but?
Well, because of the inverted yield curve, the, yeah, so.
Good, we'll, we'll take it, thanks for your efforts. Any questions on this, I think that's great.
No, I just want to commend you for being very aggressive on these things and finding all these savings, it's great.
Well, now that these, we have to take these, we can't do the advanced refunding, I've, I made sure to plug in on my calendar with our financial advisor, because in the past, we had relied upon the, our financial advisor, and just really looked at these once a year when we did the annual, but now we'll, we'll be taking these out of sequence, and they are marked on my calendar.
Thank you.
Good.
Is there no further comments, entertain a motion, and we should read it as, it is printed.
Correct. I move to approve that in order to reduce interest costs, the Treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund the town's $15,100,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2010 bonds dated January 15th, 2010, maturing on and after January 15th, 2021, in the aggregate principal amount of $6,100,000 collectively the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal, redemption premium, and interest on the refunded bonds and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
We appreciate it. Next, Jean Goldsbury, Minuteman Arc. Good evening, Jean. Jean and I had talked a while ago, and I had suggested, it seemed like it had been quite a while since we had heard an update about Minuteman Arc, so we, we, it was a good idea, and I'm delighted to welcome you here this evening.
Great, thank you very much, I'm Jean Goldsbury from 1832 Main Street in Concord, but I am appearing before you tonight on behalf of Minuteman Arc at 35 Forest Ridge Road in Concord. Just hit me, Charlie.
The arrows, yeah, I think it's, yeah.
So, I did have an opportunity to have a nice delightful meeting with Mike in August, and he suggested, as he said, that I come and talk with you a little bit about Minuteman Arc. I think that when people hear about what we do and the breadth of the services that we have, they're typically kind of surprised, so maybe this will surprise you a bit tonight as well. This is a couple of our clients at the Stowe Airport, just enjoying a lovely afternoon, looking at the planes and having a wonderful time. We really support many, many truly amazing people at Minuteman Arc. So we are 61 years old, and our mission is improving the lives of children and adults with disabilities by increasing independence, personal choice, and self-advocacy. I promise you, I am not going to go through and read all these slides to you, but I feel like the mission statement is very important, because those three things, independence, personal choice, and self-advocacy are so important to us. So Minuteman Arc, like many Arcs, was founded in the 1950s, when there were, were some families who had young children who needed services, and at that time, there were no community services available for children or adults, other than state institutions, or maybe a private hospital. So these families came together and they developed a little nursery school for their children, and over time, as you can imagine, since 1958, those children grew to adulthood, they needed more services, and many, many, many more people have come to us over time, and we've, we've really branched out quite a lot. So right now, we serve over 850 people a year, it's about 500 young children from birth to three, and 350 adults. Our, our clients come from our nine core communities, Concord is the center, it's our home, it's our home base, and the other communities are primarily along the Route 2 corridor, but we also draw from, from the, many of the surrounding communities. I think in the last three to four years, our reputation for quality has really grown, and so we've had a lot of families coming to us wanting their son, daughter, brother, sister to, to be in Minuteman Services. So in the last three years, our employment program grew by 50% to 145 clients, and one of the really amazing things about that employment program, so I, I am fortunate, I, because I, I also do accrediting for an international organization, I get to go around and see other programs throughout the U.S. and Canada, and sometimes a few other places. And typically, when an employment program has an employment rate of 25, 27%, that's pretty good. Our employment rate for, for the people who come to us who want to work is 90%. It, it's getting close to the employment rate for people with no disabilities, so that's a really fabulous opportunity for the folks who come to us. And our day habilitation program, which is a day program for people who have developmental disabilities, but also some physical challenges, like Bobby, who you see in the picture, that's grown by 40%, and we are seeing more and more and more people on the autism spectrum, and we expect that will continue to grow, we're already on that upward swoop of the autism curve. Something most people do not know about us is that we are the fourth largest employer in Concord, and we employ about 240 people who serve in all of our programs, and they're, they're just, I think, a fabulous staff, I feel very fortunate to have such a wonderful, caring group of people who work for us. We have seven separate programs at Minuteman Arc, we are really a lifespan organization, so we have our early intervention program, which starts at birth and goes through age three, at age three, children become the primary responsibility of the school system, but the early intervention program is very highly staffed by very skilled staff, we have almost all of our staff in early intervention have at least a master's degree, some have doctorates, and they do a fabulous job with the children. For the children who come to us with disabilities, with delays, when they finish at age three, over half of them don't need anything further, they've caught up with their peers, so if you think about it, that's changed that child's life forever. And it also, over the course of time, has saved our school systems literally millions of dollars, because those children have caught up. For the children that do need ongoing therapy, we have our Extra Steps Pediatric Therapies Program, that's a new program that started in January, and that serves children from three to about eight or nine years old, and that has physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, social skills groups for young children, and, and a few other things. Timber Nook is our newest program, it's actually starting, our kickoff will be next week, and Timber Nook is an outdoor learning and exploration and creative experience for children, it is all done outdoors, it is done all, all year long, and of course, we're not going to go out in a raging thunderstorm or a blinding blizzard, but if you're going out in the winter, you put on your coat and your boots, if you're going out and it's a little drizzly, you wear your raincoat, and because it is outdoors and nature-based, so what, what that program does for children, and this is for children of all abilities, what it does is it helps get children outdoors, away from screens, into nature, being creative and discovering things about themselves and each other and nature. It also really helps with vestibular development, which is part of your inner ear that affects your balance, and it affects your, your, your sort of comprehension of where your body is in space, and, and helps people, you know, as they're moving, understand how their body is moving forward or backward or up or down, so that's, that's a very important thing. That also, when children then are in school, it helps them be able to attend better, it helps them with fine muscle coordination, so it's a very beneficial program. Our Recreation and Family Services serves adults, and that's an after-school, after-work kind of program, some Saturday programs, and that's everything from, well, this afternoon they were doing a yoga class, and tomorrow they've got boot camp and ceramics, and Wednesday people go bowling, and, and there's an art class, and, and there's, there's a chorus, so all manner of activities, same kinds of things that many of us would want to do, you go to work, and, and you live in your home, but you do other things in between, and that's what the Recreation Program does. Our day habilitation, as I mentioned, is for adults who have developmental disabilities and physical challenges, that picture was taken out at Verrill Farm, we're, we're very fortunate, Verrill Farm always donates a CSA to us, as does Barrett's Mill Farm, so we're really fortunate with our partners here in the community. And Employment Services, we have, as I said, over 90% of, of our people in employment are employed in jobs, there's Kelly at Crosby's, she's one of the employees there, and you've probably seen some of our folks at, at grocery stores, at, at offices, doing all manner of work. We, actually, we work for the town, we work in the building department doing cleaning, we also do all the watering of the flower baskets in West Concord all summer long, so we, we do all kinds of jobs. And then Residential Services has several opportunities, we have nine group homes that support 43 people, five of those group homes are right here in Concord, four in West Concord, and one in Concord Center, the others, we've got a couple in Maynard, excuse me, and one in Littleton and one in Stowe. And, and those are very homelike environments, as you can see, looking at the pictures, they look like anybody else's house. We also have other living options for people, shared living is a situation where someone would live with a family, or maybe a, a single person, as in the picture here of Caitlin and Jody, and the, the individual is just blended into the family life, just part of the family, in, in a shared living situation. Independent Living is meant for folks who, who are pretty independent, but they still need some support, so they live in apartments, some of them have a roommate, some live on their own, and they have a case manager that works with them, maybe for some folks, it's just a handful of hours a week to help them with budgeting, and, and maybe grocery shopping and meal planning, for others, it might be four or five hours a day, because they're needing someone to help them learn how to cook, learn how to do their laundry, learn how to keep their home clean, and, and learn how to interact with their neighbors, and whatever else it is. Adult foster ca, oh, and we have about 20 people in Independent Living, adult foster care is just what it sounds like, it's like child foster care, only it's adults with disabilities, and we have about just over 50 people in that program, and then the group homes that I just spoke about. So there are lots of different choices for people, for living options. And we, we go places, we go a lot of places. I calculated for, for tonight, to let you know, we drove 620,000 miles last year, yeah, it's a lot, well, again, 850 people, and they're going places. We have 32 vans, you see them around the community, you'll know our vans, because as in the right-hand picture, they have our Minuteman Arc logo on the door, there are other vans that transport people from other companies, but ours always say Minuteman Arc on them. So those 32, 32 vans make 85 round trips a day, taking people to work, bringing them to their program, taking them out in the community to do activities, to do volunteer work, and, and just the myriad of activities. So we are really proud to be in Concord, we're really proud to be part of the community, and sometimes I think, you know, a lot of these statistics, people don't realize how many people we support and how many people we employ, and I think part of that is that we just kind of seamlessly fit into the fabric of the community, and that's really what we want, we want to be part of the community, and, and we also want to try to give back to the community. So at, at our headquarters building here, we offer our conference room, the, the League of Women Voters is, is meeting there throughout this year, I think starting next month, the, the Rotary Board meets there, other groups have met there, we had a reunion group from some Sandy Hook parents who came and, and used our conference room for a day, so we want to try to share the resources that we have with people in the community. The people we serve also are, are concerned with giving back to the community, if you read the Concord Journal last week, there was a little article about some of our self-advocates who did a backpack project, they talked with Bonnie Wilbur, the town social worker, and said, "So what does the town need?", and she said, "Well, we have a lot of children that their parents don't have enough money for school supplies, and we could use school supplies." So they, they got together and talked it over and decided they would hold a dance, they held a luau-themed dance, and they made about $350, which they immediately took to the store, bought all these school supplies and backpacks, and they filled 17 backpacks.
That's great.
With school supplies for children here in Concord. We're, we're very much about giving back to the community and having a sense of service and a sense of volunteerism, it's not just, you know, what, what I can get and be taken care of, but I have talents that I can share with others, so we want to do that. We volunteer at Open Table, we volunteer at Gaining Ground, we volunteer at, at some of the churches, we volunteer in, in many places around the community, because we want to be able to give back. And this is why we do it, these are the people that we serve, they're, as I said, an amazing group of people. They're, as I said, an amazing group of people with fantastic spirit. And at Minuteman, we really are all about changing lives and changing communities. So the only other thing I'd like to do is invite you to come and see us. Because as much as I can talk to you about all of this, coming and seeing it is even more exciting, and it's fun, and you'll make a whole bunch of new friends right away.
Well, town's proud to have you here with us. You can probably understand why I wanted Jeanne to come talk to you, because I was surprised to learn some of these statistics, particularly the size and the magnitude of the client base that you folks deal with. So it's really quite impressive. The one thing you didn't tell us was where your beautiful headquarters is.
Oh, it's at thirty-five Forest Ridge Road. That, Forest Ridge Road is the road that leads up to the Jarrow Club.
Up the hill.
Up the hill. We are at the bottom of the hill. So if you start up the hill, we are the first driveway on the left. And we've got a lovely, about four and a half wooded acres that is really a nice place to come. I think staff love coming there every day. The people that we serve, that you see here, like coming because it's a nice place.
The one statistic that I don't think you told me when we met that I thought was quite impressive was your employment statistic. And I know that's because you guys work hard, but is it also because you get extra amount of support from the communities here in Concord and Maynard and the like that is unusual?
Employers here are very open to hiring our people. And they've been very adaptable. Because sometimes somebody can do three-quarters of the job, but they can't quite do this one little piece. And so employers have worked with us to say, "Well, all right, well, we'll give you this other quarter of something else that's something you can do," and move that task to a different employee. But employers, by and large, have been very open and welcoming to us. And our staff work very carefully and closely with employers, which is probably part of why they are open and welcoming. If there's, you know, when someone comes, they have a job coach with them at first until they learn the job, and then the job coach will sort of start to fade back and fade back. But never goes away completely. They stay in touch with the individual and stay in touch with the employer. If something comes along, there's a new task that gets added, our staff will come in and help the person learn that new task and be successful. Because that's what we want. We want everyone to be successful.
Jeanne, thank you for the presentation. It's helpful, helpful, for sure. You know, clearly, you've done a lot. One of your driving principles is inclusion, and I think we see so many evidences of that in the community. One thing you didn't mention, it's my understanding, but correct me if I'm wrong, that you're primarily funded with state and federal funds, but you also rely extensively on donations. Am I missing some piece of this?
No, you are absolutely correct. We are primarily funded by, well, it's sort of three things. Department of Developmental Services, Mass. Health, and private insurance. Early Intervention is a required service for private insurance. But we also definitely depend on fundraising, and we've, the community chest here in Concord has been very generous with us over the years. And we really depend on that because that money, that money gets sort of split to enhance the staffing at Early Intervention so that we can have those great outcomes for the children. Because if you're ever going to put your money someplace, you want to put it on those young kids and get them the best start they can. And so some of that money goes to that, and some goes to our Recreation Program, which is not state-funded. So, but you're right. We really do depend on that. We depend on people coming to our Minuteman March and supporting the Minuteman March, or just private donations from members in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Greatly appreciate it, and we'll look forward to hearing about all the new wonderful things that Minuteman Arc will be doing in the future.
Good, and we've got some wonderful things in mind.
Thanks very much for coming, Jeanne.
You're welcome.
Our next item of business is sort of a preview, but it is a review of our Community Preservation Act grant applications. Every year CPC is already busy, I know. I see one member of CPC sitting in the back of the room, and I know they're busy. One of the things the Select Board does every year is we review and then write to the CPC with our sort of priorities with respect to those town-funded projects. So Ms. Town Manager, perhaps you could walk us through what we have so far, and then we could plan at our next Select Board meeting to actually have a full discussion of this. I know, Stare, you said you had a remark you wanted to make, so after, and then get those priorities to the CPC so they can do the hard work that they have to do.
Great, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have two memos in front of you, one we just gave you collectively from Marcia Rasmussen, Kate Hodges, and Delia Kay. It's technically to me, but I was sharing it with the board for the purposes of getting that prioritization over to CPA or CPC. This is a rundown of the projects that have been applied for and are their priorities. Number one would be White Pond Beachfront. They're looking for half a million dollars to improve and enhance public access to the beach. They had, I think, a pretty successful year, all things considered, at White Pond, considering, if you look at it as a startup, if you will. And I think they've learned a lot of lessons, and I think this will greatly enhance the amenity and open it up really to more Concord residents. Number two is further development of the Jarrow recreational area adjacent to Warner's Pond and the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. That's a request for four-hundred thousand dollars. Both of these are from open space and recreation categories under CPA. And again, the town acquired the Jarrow land, and they're looking to really make that a much more valuable open space and recreational amenity to the community. Similarly related is Warner's Pond dredging. That's a half million dollars, again, open space and recreation. That has been studied by virtue of, through the generosity of funds from the CPC in the past. So it really is about ecological health of the pond, and there's some estimates on there of talking about controlling weeds and other ways of, like I said, improving ecology out there. Number four is an affordable house on a portion of the Jarrow land. That's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar request for community housing, looking to construct a new affordable single-family home there. Number five, Regional Housing Service Office. I think this is, I'm wondering, is this a standing request to help fund that office? The RHSO provides support to the town for affordable housing initiatives. Number six is the Asitbit River Pedestrian Bridge. That's for a quarter of a million dollars. This would be designed and permitting, as I laid out, as was spelled out in the memo that was in the Town Manager's report. Number seven is the Wheeler Harrington House and Land. It's twenty thousand dollars. This is to do a survey of the property, and doing the survey, kind of defining the bounds and the topography as a first step in identifying potential reuses. Number eight is the Chamberlain Bridge Survey and Permitting. That's thirty-five thousand dollars. That's open space and recreation. And they want to, really, the idea is to reconstruct a one-hundred-and-eighty-foot-long pedestrian footbridge and walkway between Chamberlain Park and Kaiser Road Municipal Parking Lots. Some of the funds will be used to help design ADA-compliant and ecologically sensitive replacement to the current structure, which is over forty years old and nearing the end of its life. Any questions about those projects?
Not about the projects, but just making sure. Is this in their priority list, or is it just, you know?
I believe it is, but I can certainly clarify that for the discussion at the next meeting.
That'd be great.
So then the next document is a memo from CPW Director Rich Rain about, it's only about one project that he's interested in too. I shouldn't say he's only interested in one project, that would make him seem very myopic. He has a lot of things he's interested in, day in, day out. So the particular CPA project he's looking at is for the Emerson Field improvements. He has a description of the background on the project. CPA has allocated some funds in prior fiscal years, and he's looking for another request to continue the planning of it, and not to basically help offset the overall cost by funding it in multiple installments. And so he's looking for another five-hundred-thousand-dollar appropriation from CPA. And major construction, if granted, major construction on the renovation of Emerson Field could begin in the spring of calendar year 2020. You can see, he also included a plan that shows some of the renovations that would take place and some of the additions. So it's a pretty comprehensive plan for Emerson.
Stare, you had a comment or a question?
So this is the first time I'm looking at the memo from Marcia and Kate, and all of these projects look great. And also, the Emerson Field, we did get that previously. So I had a chance to look through it, and it's a great project. But having been on the CPA, I just want to kind of reiterate a comment that I had last year. I'm hoping that there will be some matching fund or funds. I see here he's looking at ADA grant opportunities and sports groups. We definitely have promises in the past that the sports groups would participate with the funding. And I know there's a number of sports groups and after-school groups, and I would ask again that they participate in helping to fund this.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I mean, Dave received an allocation last year.
Yes, and the year before.
So I think all of these projects on here are things that we've heard about that are not sort of news. Steve, the one question I had was a number on Marcia's memorandum. Item number four, I don't know the overall funding for the affordable house on the Jarrow land, but I see this. But there's also some residual funds left at the Town Manager's discretion, based on the Warren article that we passed, twenty-three, I think. I can't remember the number. Twenty-three last year at town meeting. So I'm wondering if the overall plan includes any kind of request for some of those affordable housing funds, and sort of similar to your remark, matching. That'd just be interesting.
I just make a note of that, to discuss that internally. I don't know if it's, would that backstop the CPA funds? I don't know if there was a sufficient amount to do the whole project, but to something like that.
There would be in the Town Manager's funds enough to do the whole project. The question of putting together a packet.
Yes.
And trying to find matching opportunities with other private groups or town groups to take some of the pressure off CPA, because I know they always have, like, way more.
Yeah, way more requests than there is. One of the things, just if I made to that point, it's an excellent point, I am actually meeting with the RHSO tomorrow for the first time to kind of get my head around the myriad affordable housing sources, programs, like pending initiatives, to kind of develop my own mental toolkit, if you will, to do exactly what you're suggesting.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Well, I'll say, following up, I met with Liz Rusker, who runs the office, and she is going to come talk to us on October seventh. And she's going to talk to us about two things, or give us an update on the Junction Village project, one that predates you. And then there is going to be a request from an organization called HOM, which is a consortium of towns for some funding to go to that project. So she'll be coming on October seventh to give us an update.
Actually, I have one more question on item six, the Asitbit River Pedestrian Bridge. Really great project that is generating a lot of interest among the cultural councils. My question is, where it says "Design and Permitting," I wanted to get some clarification because I'm not sure if I'm remembering right. The previous funds were, I think, a survey and permitting, but I could be wrong. So maybe part of the permitting got done. I just want some clarification because I'm not probably remembering the right detail about it.
Well, it couldn't be all of the permitting because I didn't know exactly where they were going to put it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I believe all the applications are due around the twenty-second of September, if I remember correctly, and shortly thereafter, they'll be posted. So there's an opportunity.
Right.
I think we all saw the presentation.
Right. My question is about the previous CPA funding. I think it was twenty-five thousand or thirty-five thousand. And I'm trying to remember if that was the permitting or...
What it actually covered.
Exactly.
I don't think of it for me. It was just a conceptual design that led to that presentation that we saw.
In the document from, from the Plan Department, it wasn't the Plan Department, in 2017, they did use ten thousand dollars in transportation demand management funding that they received actually in 2001. I don't see on this memo a reference to CPA funds. It may have been funded, but I think that first phase was a feasibility study.
Feasibility study, okay.
And which included some site selection in her report. She talks about how they think they've settled on a site that seems to work.
Okay, well, look forward, that should be a good discussion, a lot of worthwhile projects to talk about, so that'll be very interesting. So thank you.
If it'd be helpful, I can have Marcia and some of her team here to answer questions when you do the prioritization.
Let's talk about, yeah, that'd be great on the one hand. On the other hand, I'd hate to have them come out, if not necessary, but let's talk about that. Next item on the agenda, draft budget calendar review. So you're up again, Stare. Very colorful handout here.
I did, and I handed out another one.
Two copies.
Yeah, so...
Monochrome and the multicolored.
So just wanted to go through the, it's a draft budget calendar. One of the things that Finance Director Carrie LaFleur and I have had some initial discussions about the preparation of the budget, as the board's aware, this will be my first budget in Concord.
Excuse me, that wasn't online, and could somebody put it up on the screen so that others may see it?
Do we have it?
No, we don't have it. I will, I'll give you my copy.
And back to... I think we have a couple extra copies.
I have extra copies, sure.
It's not really a decision kind of thing. It's just laying out the flow of budget activity.
I can go with the blue copy. Yeah, and really, just for the board's benefit, the intent of this is to just, really just to signal that we are starting the process. I've done a number of municipal budgets, and I just, just learning how that process works in a detailed way here in Concord. Carrie and I have been having some detailed discussions about it, some things that we're looking at for FY21, some, maybe some budget approaches that I've used in the past that I've found successful. Certainly, Concord has a really remarkable, remarkably well-developed budget process and budget document, so I don't know how much I'm actually going to add. It really is in very good shape, and it's really a credit to the team you have here in place. But I wanted to show that we are starting to map out the budget calendar, so it's not, so we are paying attention to it. And the biggest thing is the budget, there's a set of budget instructions that we are in the process of drafting that will go out to department heads, and that will happen probably next week. And then that'll trigger a... And then that'll trigger a series of meetings. Um, the difference between the blue one and the one that was handed out just for people's edification is, uh, the colorful one I didn't think would translate well, especially if you had to reproduce it in black and white. And so we produced a, a cleaner copy that instead of the color coding of responsible parties, it's a column that has a responsible party. That's the only meaningful difference. Um, the other thing is there was a, there is still on, on both versions, there was a discussion of a joint meeting, uh, with, with Carlisle. I think that, that was something that had happened in the past, mostly related to the high school project. And I think the interest in doing that is somewhat mitigated now.
I think, um, I think I know from having a conversation with the Chair of the Finance Committee that he is interested in putting together a group that would include selectmen and finance committees from both towns to chat about some stuff. But the meeting that you've articulated was in fact meetings that we had during the high school process. This, I think, Mr. Manfield is more general, but we'll leave it to him to schedule that meeting and invite us to come whenever he has that arranged.
Okay. I, I agree. I think certainly getting input from the, from folks around us on what pressure points they have is extremely helpful. So this just lays out, um, not only Finance Committee meetings, but also benchmarks for submissions and things like that. Um, and it's all backed off of the annual town meeting date, which is April 27th. It's a little bit later this year than I, I'm told than it was in past years. And so if it looks like things are getting, if it looks like things have slid, it's not because we haven't started. It's because the meet, the, the target date is later.
Ran into, uh, the first week being hol- Jewish holidays. The second week, there's a big, uh, special set of activities happening in Concord with, uh, one of our organizations. And the third week is school vacation. So that's how we wound up where we are. I think the date on here, uh, Stephen, that's most important to me, especially early on, is when are you going to be prepared to come to the Select Board? Uh, with some specificity as to the budget you're, uh, going to want to take to the Finance Committee? So I think having us have a chance before it gets to the Finance Committee to at least provide some input to you on the priorities that you've articulated, your budget, not ours. But I think it's.
So, um, it would be December 16th would be, sorry, go ahead.
Twenty-sixth.
I, I see the present, on this calendar, it's the Presentation of Flimery FY21 General Fund Operating Budget and FY21 to '25 Capital Budget Recommendations by Town Managers to the Select Board. So that would be when I deliver the finished Town Managers' project. But I know there's intervals with the, before that.
I was just going to mention if, if there was any interest in, um, seeing anything before the Finance Committee votes its final guideline, I mean, it's November.
Yep.
Guideline, there's, there's, there's probably an opportunity to do that as well.
Yes, I think one of the things that, it's got nothing to do with Stephen, but a concern to me is I think we get the budget too late and really don't have as much of a chance to weigh in and therefore feel a little bit compromised in our ability to be supportive. Cause we're kind of just hearing about it and the Finance Committee is going, you know, deep into this stuff. So as soon as there is a budget that you think is worth discussing, um, I, I would really encourage you to come back and have a discussion with us as early as possible.
So right now, the town manager is scheduled to present a budget to the Finance Committee on November 7th. Um, we've asked the Finance Committee if they could swap that out for November 14th. So if you have a meeting the first week in November, there should be something that.
Sure we do.
We could share with you prior to going back to the Finance Committee.
No, I just think I'd like, uh, again, in the, I would just like to see there be a regular, just like this, uh, Steve, that there would be a regular time that the town manager would come to the Select Board before they get into the guideline process with the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea. So it looks like November 7th or 14th, the town manager responds to the tentative guidelines. So if we can weigh in right before that, that sounds perfect. That's usually when there's some negotiating going on about, you know, start with a wish list and then has to get whittled down. So that would be a really good time to, for us.
Yeah, but we don't, we haven't had a chance to watch your budget process develop. Uh, Mr. Whalen, when he did it, he would have a very, um, I don't know how to call it, but a, a large budget. One that was very large and was never going to be approved, that he tried to assimilate all of the needs of the town. And then he would win and went down and then get it to the Finance Committee. And then they go through the process trying to come terms with the guideline. So I don't need to see the, you know, giant one with everybody's list of stuff, but the one you think you're going to want to support.
Mm-hmm. Or minimally present to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, cause I'd, I'd, you know, I want to be, to, to the extent we can, we want to be supportive of your budget and be able to, if we get asked questions, to be able to articulate our view and our perspective on that. Similar to the way the school committee would with the school committee budget, so.
Yeah, no, of course it makes, makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea. And, um, I just want to ask Stephen, is this looks, um, I haven't really seen this before, but it looks like how I remember we've done it in the past. Are there any changes that you've made this year to any of the process?
So the only thing I did differ, uh, I think I did differently, um, is that there were a couple of different calendars. There was the, basically the town's budget calendar, like the town manager's budget calendar. And then there was the Finance Committee's meeting calendar and, and budget calendar. And I asked, uh, Carrie and her, and her office did a great job taking care of this, to just integrate it into one document so I could follow it.
Go ahead.
Perfect, wonderful.
I, I think, as you mentioned, uh, Manager Whalen had the advantage of doing this here for a long time. So he probably knew like the back of his hand. I, the only dis- my primary disadvantage is, is, uh, um, knowing the process as it exists. And so that's where I'm, I'm trying to simplify things to the greatest extent possible.
Go ahead.
Well, it helps us too, having one calendar. I think that's a great idea.
Do you have a comment or?
No.
No. All right, thank you. So we'll look forward to having a detailed conversation with you as soon as we can. Next item on the agenda is, um, Committee Liaison Reports. Linda?
All right. Um, I attended a REC Committee meeting and after their busy summer, they certainly had, um, a lot to report. I might mention that they are looking for an additional member and they hope to find someone from the community who, um, preferably has children, uh, in the schools, but doesn't have to be necessarily. And, um, they're, but they want somebody who can really, um, dig in and give them some feedback about what's working with the REC program and the BD Center, et cetera.
Good.
Um, I, I was particularly interested, and I think everyone else would be, about their report out on, uh, what, their first season with White Pond. And, um, I think overall, they felt like they had a, a, a good, uh, start out of the gate. Um, there were, um, seven different days where Al Jai Bloom was a problem and they felt that that may have, uh, uh, tampered, um, the actual attendance. Um, they, uh, sold out on the household passes, 650 passes. Um, but they felt as though attendance was on a daily basis was way under that. And they were prepared, um, to deal with, you know, uh, large crowds, particularly on the warm days and actually, um, did not have any problems with that. So it could have been because of the Al Jai Bloom and, and coming at different times that kept people at bay. Um, but all in all, I did ask them if they had any critical events. They did not. And, um, in fact, felt they were overstaffed with the Rangers this year, just because of the way it played out. So overall, I think they had a good start and they, um, have made many improvements to the site. There will be additional improvements, um, this fall to prevent runoff going into the, um, wiping away the sand on the beach and, and, um, runoff into the pond. And, uh, and then they have other, um, capital projects on the books for going forward. Um, they also had other improvements at Rideout, um, Emerson Pool upgrades, Emerson Basketball, et cetera. Um, they, we've already heard about the new visitor center, um, um, manager that they've hired. They're very excited about that. And they did want to point out that this year, the tree lighting will be on the, uh, December 1st, which is the first Sunday after Thanksgiving because Thanksgiving comes late. And they just wanted to alert people to that now. So they are looking for one additional REC member.
Okay.
Um, I also attended, um, the Concord Housing Authority, uh, meeting. They, um, are, um, continuing to, I, I guess I would, the best way to summarize it is they are continuing to gather information and they're sort of at the early strategy stage on, um, repositioning their HUD, um, properties. And that's going to be a long process, but, um, they had an attorney come in and talk about some of the initial process considerations at this particular meeting. Um, I also attended the Joint Housing Groups Meeting. Um, and there were four different housing groups represented at that meeting. Um, it came rel- relatively early this year. Usually the, in the last couple of years, they've managed, uh, managed to do two a year. Uh, this one came a little early, but it had to do with approval of, um, a new home grant that's going, uh, needs to be sub- a five-year planning home grant that needs to be submitted.
Yeah, that's the one that, uh, that Liz is going to come talk to us about on the 7th.
Very good. Um, some of that money, obviously, uh, for the next, um, five years has been committed to, um, Junction Village already, um, once it's off the ground. The, um, but there were, having watched, um, the development of this joint meeting over the last two years, I have to say it's really paid off in terms of the interchange between the groups and the number of initiatives that, um, they're able to get each other informed about. So, so that's been heartening to see. Um, I also attended the, um, NMI StarMet Reuse Planning Committee meeting. Um, the public forum for that committee, uh, well, first public forum for the, this is the 229 Main Street where there are 44 acres, uh, that will be redo, um, after the Superfund Cleanup to Residential Standards, um, will be, um, it's an exciting opportunity in terms of some development and planning. The first public forum is scheduled for October 17th. And at the, this particular, uh, this last meeting for the Reuse Planning Committee, the committee members were asked to, um, take five minutes each and just lay out pie in the sky, how they envisioned this site being developed. And it was, um, very informative. Uh, everyone came in from a slightly different perspective. The, the, um, committee as a whole is being informed by the envisioned Concord, by previous, um, suggestions from the, um, existing 229 Committee, et cetera. Um, so it's going to be exciting to see, um, the discussion we have at the public forum. And that concludes my report for now.
Good. Uh, Jane?
Yes, um, can everybody hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. So I attended the NRC meeting at which, um, they, uh, they passed the, um, excuse me, I'm going to pull up my notes here. Um, the Concord Culinary Project at 430 Old Bedford Road. Uh, well, or I should say they recommended it to the Planning Board. Um, this is a project that's been, uh, worked on for quite a while. It came in having recognized many, I think, all of the NRC's concerns. Um, perhaps not everyone's concerns, but certainly satisfied those which in, which are within the NRC's jurisdiction. It's also a smaller project. So I think, um, it was certainly the discussion that they felt that the NRC had, or that the, uh, developer had, uh, heard their comments and, uh, refined, uh, their plans accordingly. Um, at the same meeting, Westchester County, uh, company with Lot 2A on Cuco Road was denied. Um, that's a, a long drawn out discussion. Um, that involves a subdivision, um, and the PRD behind, um, that it, uh, could be linked to. Um, and probably not worthy of going through now. It's also long in the making, um, and ha- and that specific paper road, um, development opportunities has a long history in Concord. Um, but this phase, Westchester County, um, Lot 2A was denied by the NRC. Uh, then I also attended a very full meeting of the, um, HTC discussing the library addition. And after a long meeting, um, uh, one of, I think it was the sixth or seventh on this, uh, plan, the, uh, HTC very conditionally, uh, recommended. Um, it's, it has not, it's not officially done yet. Um, they need to see their, their, uh, conditions, uh, they need to review them once more to, uh, put it, uh, put it to bed. But they wanted the Planning Board to know this week, um, that they had recommended it for approval with their conditions and the conditions are not, are, are long. So those were two fairly long, uh, long-term projects that moved forward. Um, and I also just wanted to add my, uh, reiteration to the Town Managers' report on the, uh, the AAA, uh, uh, restrictions. I'm not, sorry, triple E, wrong letter. Um, I've received numerous, uh, emails from citizens with children who are grateful that the town is taking this proactive measure and are, you know, are worrying about their kids, uh, going outside after, after dusk or really just worried about the infestation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tori?
Okay. I attended the West Concord Junction Cultural Council. And, um, they will be coming to the Select Board for, um, approval of four signs that, um, they want to have placed at the boundary announcing, um, that you're entering the cultural district. And that has to be a Select Board vote.
Yep.
And they are very busy planning for the Concord, West Concord Porch Fest.
Oh, yeah, that's coming up.
Saturday, the 21st, from 1:00 to 5:00. There will be two dozen live acts within walking distance of West Concord Village. It starts at Harvey Wheeler. There will be 10 porches, 23 vans, classical, jazz, rock, bluegrass, funk, food. Um, it's going to be a really fun day, a week from this Saturday.
Great.
And I attended the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Meeting. And everyone is invited to the ribbon cutting for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, which will be September 27th, Friday at 2:00 PM, near, um, the Michel Brook Crossing and the Brookside Complex.
Mm-huh.
Also, a map of Concord section of the rail trail is now on the website with, um, some, uh, recommendations about, um, sharing the route between bicycles, pedestrians, joggers, et cetera. And then at Jane's suggestion, I today, um, attended a very exciting, um, meeting with some people from other towns called Making the Connections. This is a, um, regional transportation meeting run by the MAPC and MAGIC. So, uh, the town of Sudbury is going to be a host community. Um, they're trying to get a pilot started and they have a transportation committee. And it might be similar to how we are the host committee for the Regional Housing Services. Um, so they are inviting other towns to apply for grants. And I'm thinking that it could tie in maybe with the Transit Oriented Development Grant that we have. Um, so I, I've, um, sent out an email to you, Stephen and, and Marcia. Um, because this is an exciting, um, way to get some matching funds. And the, the main purpose of the pilot is to try something out and collect data about who are, who's using these, um, rides. What are, is it, um, they've, they've lowered, Sudbury has set their senior level at 50 plus. So they want to get some demographics on that. Um, they have some after-school riders, some disabled riders, financially vulnerable people trying to take a, uh, ride for second or third shift work. So they're trying to collect data so that they can go for larger grants. So I'm really hoping that we can participate in this. And, um, thanks Jane for recommending that. participate in this. And, um, thanks, Jane, for recommending that I go.
Thank you.
Carrie, thank you for coming forward.
I attended the Tax Fairness Committee Meeting last Friday. And, um, as you know, we have a senior means-tested, uh, property tax exemption in, in town, which has been implemented this past year. It has a sunset clause in it, and that is it would automatically lapse after three years. Similar with the one that was in Sudbury, and they had theirs fixed so that it didn't lapse. And our committee's been working on language for that. But in addition, there were some administrative issues with respect to the, the way the town assessor could go about determining eligibility and amounts for various applicants. And so, the committee has come up with a revised Home Rule, uh, Bill, if you will. And what I'm trying to determine, as you might recall, this was passed a town meeting, then sent to the Legislature, came back from Legislature, approved a second time at town meeting, and then approved in a general town election. If we submit a new bill, we have to go through that whole process again. So, I'm trying to find out if an amendment to the bill is a simpler, more streamlined kind of process, or if it has to go that. But in any event, the committee's been working hard to, uh, get this squared away. We will probably hear about it in some detail. As you may know, the town assessor will come to us, uh, usually early in November with some, uh, taxing activities that we have to approve, the commercial versus residential tax rate and the like. And it turns out, we have to do some approval of this senior means-tested, uh, tested exemption, so it'll come back, uh, here again sometime early in November. So, the, thanks to the committee for working very hard on that. I have no miscellaneous correspondence, so yes?
I failed to mention one thing. If I could just add it, please.
You could.
Um, we had anticipated that in August, we would hear about Junction Village and whether they had been awarded, um, the funding, and they have not this round. So, they will be submitting a third application early next year. Um, and again, we will wait till the end of summer, August, to hear. Um, the difference in this third round is that the, um, state DHCD has asked for specific, um, materials, additional materials that they would like to see. And I think the feeling is, uh, you know, like the ground lease and some other details.
That they wouldn't be asking.
And that they wouldn't be asking if, um, it didn't look favorable going forward.
That was my meeting with Liz, was to get the, get this understood, what it meant to have been denied. She was very optimistic that the third round would be funding, would be funded. And she has already worked out a timeline for if it's funded in July, when we need to do what in order for it to count in our affordable housing inventory.
So, if it all went as, um...
Hoped.
As hoped. That's a good word. Um, we would be looking at probably spring of 2021 for actual, uh, breaking ground.
Yeah.
But that could still count somehow?
We might, we might have a small little dip where we're not covered, but not enough that it would matter. But that's one of the reasons she's coming, is to give us a detailed timeline to show us where we are on this.
Good.
And, as you remember, uh, we have a committee that's not fully staffed yet, that is going to deal with the open space kind of stuff. And she's got some proposals for when we should really get that geared up so that they can be actually work, working on that in the timeline that she'll articulate. So, that's a good reminder of that.
Did they give any indication why they didn't accept it this time? Obviously, they have questions, but...
Well, it's not unusual, number one. And this is an assisted living facility.
Right.
And it's not the highest on the state's, uh, funding.
Priority, yeah.
Priority. So, I think there was nothing wrong with the application. You'll, you'll know, these people have, I think, five additional facilities like this around the Commonwealth.
Right, right, right.
So, and they've been successful doing it. So, I think it was just a timing and a priority kind of issue. At least that's what Liz told me. All right, so now we turn to committee nominations.
Brian Davidson of 86 Buckley Road for the Cemetery Committee.
All right, thank you. We have no committee appointments or next, uh, public comments. Are there any? Yes, ma'am. You know the drill.
I do with that. Thank you. Carlin Reed, 83 Wits. And quick clarification from something earlier dealing with the budget. I see the Select Board is going to be meeting on November 4th and November 18th. Which of those two meetings will you be expecting to hear the first glimmer of the, of the town's budget?
I would guess the 4th if, if it's going, if their Finance Committee is going to look at it on the 14th.
Excellent, thank you.
Other comments? Seeing none?
Move to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all very much for coming.